Good evening. It is 6:30 on June the 11th, 2024. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I am now calling this city council meeting to order. We're very pleased tonight to have a couple of young people leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Pledge of the Texas Flag, Kason Ankrum and Aria Perkins. You knew I was gonna call you, Kason. Would y'all all rise, please? Y'all will step right over here? It's on you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these youngsters a round of applause. Wait a minute, picture time, picture time. Thank y'all so much. If you'll remain standing, I'm gonna ask Reverend Arthur Banks to come up and lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with humble hearts, asking your divine guidance and wisdom as the Bastrop City Council gather to make decisions that will shape our community. We acknowledge that without your direction, their efforts will be in vain. Grant our council members clarity to discern what is just and beneficial for all residents of Bastrop. Fill their minds with wisdom and navigate their complexities and govern their hearts with compassion to serve with integrity and fairness. May they be instruments of your peace, fostering unity and understanding among all who call Bastrop home. Guide their discussions, decisions, so that they may always reflect the values, truth, justice, and community with integrity. And we pray your blessings upon their work, that they may bring prosperity and well-being to Bastrop, and give them the strength to understand and to stand firm in conviction and courage, and lead with vision and purpose. This we do pray, in the name of Jesus the Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. We'll move on to presentations and reports. I don't have a whole lot to report out to, but I do want y'all to check out what our Parks and Recreation are doing. They have a slate of projects, including summer water programs and discovery days. In July, there's a dance and gymnastics camp in the works. Our staff will be partnering with the State Park, Eden East Farm, the Kerr Center, and the Family Crisis Center, as well as We Are One Foundation provide these activities. I encourage y'all to visit the website at cityofbastrop.org/recreation for more details. I'm sure they would be happy to answer any of your questions. Some of the upcoming events that we have on the horizon are June 13th, we're gonna have Music in the Park on June 15th, a big deal, Juneteenth Parade and Celebration in downtown. Y'all are all welcome to come out to that. And then, a little bit further out on June 29th is gonna be our big event to celebrate our nation's 248th birthday, so make sure you jot that down in your calendars. I'll pause while y'all put that in your calendar. We'll move on now to council members' report, and Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So, I've been busy. I attended the Ilgin Juneteenth Parade, I bowled with veterans for Bastrop County Cares. Last night, I was asked to do a greeting at the Providence Primitive Baptist General Convention, hosted at our tabernacle in Cedar Creek. I enjoyed Pride Weekend, they did a wonderful job with the entire Pride Weekend, had a lot of people in town for that. I hosted Farm Street Opry, where our very own Terry Moore was on the lineup of singers. I also attended her album release party, which was Friday night at Calvary Episcopal Church. Beautiful CD she has out there called "You Are Loved," and we appreciate everything she does in Bastrop. I also attended Tracks, which is a one-act play, put on by the Opera House. They have like a youth camp kind of thing, workshop for acting, and they did a play and took that play to Houston, to a convention. So that was really good. Some of those kids, I've been in some plays with at the Opera House, it was really good to see them kind of blossom, and I'm told they had a ball in Houston at the convention. We met the artist, or I met the artist Wesley Wolford at Fine Art Gallery. He is the creator of the Harriet Tubman statue that's gonna be displayed later next week. So I had a great opportunity to meet him, we had some really good discussions about his vision, and how he came up with the concept of creating this beautiful statue that's gonna be displayed at the Kerr Community Park. So there was some really good conversation there. We will be celebrating June 19th, or Juneteenth, as we call it, this weekend. There will be a parade at 10:00, and then there's festivals in the park all day, then there's a dance, the unveiling of the sculpture at Kerr Community will be at 5:00 Saturday, so lots of Juneteenth stuff going on, and we hope that you all will participate in that. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention was there is a survey out there for solid waste. We have an RFP right now to look at firms that will be, or possibly be, providing our trash pickup. So please, it took me less than 30 seconds. We need everyone, if you're living in the city, to take that survey, so that we can have enough information when those RFPs come back to make the best decision for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to, as the mayor did remind you, this Saturday, at 5:00 at the Kerr Center will be the unveiling of the Harriet Tubman sculpture. And I also got to meet Wesley Wolford, the artist, at Found Fine Art Gallery, so thank you, Jamie, so much for y'all hosting that. And a really wonderful thing, I met a couple from Dallas, and Ms. Sumail Locombe, I know, took them to the storehouse, so they were treated there. And then Doc Jackson also took Wesley to Hambone's for some good food there. So I know that he thoroughly enjoyed Bastrop while he was here. Looking forward to the unveiling this Saturday. Another thing happening this Saturday is Music in the Museum, and it's gonna be at 12:00 noon, and the Heltons are gonna be singing, and that's our own Kathy Danielson and her family. So that's at 12:00 noon in the museum, so don't miss that. You can do that after you go to the Juneteenth Parade, Saturday morning at 10:00. Go to the museum, then you go down to Fisherman's Park and enjoy festivities, then you're gonna come back down to Main Street for the street dance. So you're just gonna stay in town all day Saturday and have a great time. But, a lot of fun things coming up, and just wanted to remind y'all, and we appreciate your participation in all of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett.
I think y'all have covered it pretty well.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fossler.
Hi there. Good evening. I wanna say congratulations to Bastrop Pride for having a successful event last weekend, love for life. Congrats to my sister for turning a decade, I've got to watch it all, it's been beautiful. Also for Juneteenth, they need volunteers, it's posted on their Facebook page, so please sign up, they need volunteers, all the way from parade setup to parade breakdown to events and street dance that night. I attended my last Parks Board meeting, which was really sad, it's been a beautiful four years, but my vacancy is leading to a beautiful appointment later on in the agenda, so stay tuned for that. I have some announcements for the master gardeners. If you haven't taken a look at the garden out front, we took the mayor's monarch pledge, we, I don't know, maybe the mayor did, it wasn't me. The mayor took the mayor's monarch pledge, and so there's a pollinator and monarch garden out front. And if you want to learn how to do, plant beautiful things like this, and learn to grow them, then there are two opportunities for you. The master gardeners are having a Summer Fest in Bob Bryant Park on June 22nd, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, it's just two hours in the morning. There are 30-minute presentations on composting, succulents, irrigation, and pollinators, and then there'll be kids' activities at the fairy garden, a presentation on good bug, bad bug, it's also good for adults, and rock painting. So that's Saturday, June 22nd, at Bob Bryant Park. And then if you want to be a certified master gardener, they do this training once a year. It runs August 17th to November 9th, it's a series of 13 Saturdays and one Friday, it's usually from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's 185 bucks for 55 hours of instructions, and applications are due by the end of July. The classes cover vegetable gardening, plant pathology, entomology, propagation, gardening for wildlife, and then once the interns graduate, they do 50 hours of volunteer work, and then ongoing years, it's 25, I believe. So I went through the program in 2018, it's fantastic, and it definitely taught me to kill less things in my garden, so I highly recommend it. I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protim Kirkland. Thank you so much. We'll move on to Item 4C, City Manager's Report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do that, City Secretary has an item she'd like to discuss.
So I don't usually have much to say, but our own mayor, before we have another meeting, will have a birthday, so we wanted to celebrate you with a birthday card, so.
Well. Like I needed to remind her, but thank you so much. Thank y'all so much, I appreciate that. Time marches on. Now, Madam City Manager.
All right. It's been a busy, 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 busy couple weeks. At the last Planning and Zoning Commission, legal held their workshop, and that is setting the stage for our comprehensive plan rewrite and our development code rewrite. You will see an item later on in the agenda regarding a half and associate's update for that comprehensive plan. We continue to coordinate with the school on the construction of all of their bond projects, and it is monumental effort, because they've got a lot of those schools programmed to open already by the next school year, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. The woman in the picture is Ms. Piper, who I always graciously refer to as the first catalyst to customer service in Bastrop under my administration, and if some of you know her story, she is the reason a lot of the things we've changed have changed. She was at our last Sit with Sill on June 29th, and the next one is on July 26th, and it'll now alternate to the morning at 7:30 here in City Hall. Whoop, too fast. We continue coordination on all of the roads. I've had a lot of, boy, there's a lot of work going on, and boy, there's a lot of work going on, as it relates to the streets. This is Lover's Lane on the upper, this is Lover's Lane, and that's our coordination with the county, and this is actually one of the first roads completed with HA5 and striping, and this is over on Hospital, which is near the police station. Terrapave will pick up in Piney Creek Bend as that proof of concept, and that's the July-August timeframe. And then, our partnership with the county and WCID has already taken care of our portion of the streets in Tahitian Village, the Hoffman Road area, and again, extensions through Lover's Lane, just to name a few. We did have some residents who moved barricades, and caused some damage, and so the police department and the city are putting out a lot of educational flyers. I get it, it's sometimes hard to park a street over and walk, but we're doing our best to try to inform everybody with door hangers, street signs, I mean, just about anything and everything we can do to inform folks about when it's happening. And I continue to get, man, you're fixing all the pretty streets, what happened to Water Street? If you have noticed, there's a lot of street cuts at Water Street as we prepared and repaired, breaks in the water lines and some of the infrastructure underneath. Water Street from Chestnut to Gutierrez is scheduled by the end of this fiscal year, and then we will pick up, the remainder of Water Street will then move to Linden, and we'll move to Farm. So those are not off the radar, they continue to be the three biggest streets with high Budget, that's where we are. So, you would have received a message from the City Secretary regarding a potential June 18th meeting, which will talk about where we are as we relate to our items of importance, and where the council wants to be in terms of tax rates, and if there's any particular projects. I will again reiterate that I don't have any new capital projects in front of the council, I'm hoping to finish what we have on deck and not take on anymore until we get there. However, there have been a great deal of residents who have approached about a recreation center, and I have said, you're gonna have to put that up for a vote for a tax increase. And if you get the numbers, we'll talk about it in the budget. Work continues, well, as we get through the budget workshop, then we will post Balancing Act Online, where the residents get to play with the slider and get to talk about what they want to have funded as it relates to the budget. We continue to talk about the sports complex, moving further into consultation, the qualified hotel project, we have a discussion tonight in executive session, and then the Hot Fund Task Force. We discussed the redundant spend at the last meeting, and we're coming back to discuss, okay, what's the best way to shrink that and continue to share resources to get the biggest bang for the buck. The Boards and Commissions Fair is scheduled for July 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00, be there or be square, please go ask your friends to join, and get on a board or commission. And then, as Councilmember Lee said, we do have the solid waste survey. We did receive four responses to the RFP, two have already sort of floated down to the bottom, simply because of cost, and we have two frontrunners, and I believe the residents are gonna be very happy with what we can bring to the table with little to no Everybody's talked about the Journey to Freedom, it's on display June 15th, we have the unveiling ceremony on the 15th, and the dedication ceremony that day, well, on June 19th at noon. And then, that's the URL for more information, cityofbastrop.org/freedom. And then you guys have already talked about the Juneteenth Celebration, Parade at 10:00, Festival 11, Street Dance at 7:00, and I understand that the barbecue cook-off has been postponed, maybe till the weather gets cooler. Curtis Hancock and I, we're going to have male and female teams in, and we're ready to duel it out. So that's coming to you, Sheila, I'm waiting for the new date. We also are planning for the Big Bang, which is our 4th of July celebration, that will be held on June 29th, just because of the way the days fall. The wonderful Pet and Pal Parade is back, so please, bring your pooches, bring your pets, and your iguanas, and alpacas, and everything that I saw last year. And then, we will have the festival in Fisherman's Park, we will have fireworks at dusk. We are working with the Chamber to secure a bunch of the swag the Chamber had, so that we can have a lot of giveaways for the kids and the public at large. And there you are.
Councilmember Lee, you have a comment or question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. When is the survey gonna be taken down for the solid waste?
We'll probably leave it on through the end of the month. We've got interviews to do yet for the two top firms.
Okay, and then, I would like an update on the African-American Cultural Center, in terms of the one-year lease, if that needs to be done in another meeting, that's great, but...
It's on the June 25th, council agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to Item 4D, Proclamation of City Council, City of Bastrop, Texas Recognizing the Legacy of Harriet Tubman.
Thank you, Mayor. Who's going to receive the proclamation for the Harriet Tubman?
We need to wait for the City Secretary to come back, so she can read the proclamation. Step up, ladies.
Could be you, Laura.
Yes, ma'am.
Whereas, Harriet Tubman was born into slavery in 1822, and escaped from her plantation in 1849 in Maryland, and became a free woman in Philadelphia. And whereas, Tubman made numerous trips back to the South between 1849 and 1860. And whereas, during this time period, she helped free her parents, husband, family, and approximately 70 enslaved friends in about 10 trips. And whereas, she had a wanted dead or alive bounty for her capture, valued at $40,000. And whereas, Tubman joined the Union Army in 1860 and became a scout and spy, becoming the first woman to lead an armed expedition in the Civil War, and liberated more than 700 more enslaved people. And whereas, after the war, Tubman moved to Auburn, New York, where she had purchased property, and cared for her aging parents, and was involved in this suffragette movement, fighting not only for the rights of women, but also for minorities, the disabled and the elderly. And whereas, Harriet Tubman is remembered today because of the bravery she displayed as an African-American woman who could not read or write, but managed to navigate her way with many passengers to freedom on the Underground Railroad. And whereas, on this day, we are celebrating the arrival of the traveling sculptural exhibition, Harriet Tubman, The Journey to Freedom, by acclaimed sculptor Wesley Wolford of North Carolina, to the Kerr Community Center and Park in Bastrop, Texas. Whereas, this exhibition was installed at this time to coincide with the city's Juneteenth Celebration and 110th anniversary of the Kerr Community Center, and will continue to be enjoyed by citizens of Texas through August 20th, '24. And whereas, The Journey to Freedom is a powerful portrait of Harriet Tubman, intentionally depicting the leadership, selflessness, and courage that she has demonstrated during her fight for freedom from slavery for herself and so many others. Whereas, locating the sculptor at the Kerr Community Center brings attention to the important role African-Americans have had in the history and development of the city of Bastrop. This site is central to the city's historic African-American cultural district, where many of our local heroes also bravely fought to abolish slavery and establish equal rights for all. And whereas, the city of Bastrop, Texas is thrilled to be the first site in Texas to host this prestigious exhibit. In September 2024, will next travel to the International African-America Museum in Charleston, South Carolina. And whereas, the city of Bastrop is even more honored to join the rank of exhibitors because the statue was cast by the talented men and women of pyrology, foundry, and studio located in Bastrop, Texas. It is a tremendous source of pride for our city that our friends and neighbors had a hand in bringing this meaningful and important sculptor to fruition. And whereas, it is indeed an honor to share the legacy of Harriet Tubman, who continues to inspire us today for her bravery in risking her life on the many journeys that freed enslaved people on the Underground Railroad. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas recognize the legacy of Harriet Tubman, and witness where the sill of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to be affixed this day, 11th day of June 2024.
They'll come down off the diaphragm, take a picture.
Quite an accomplishment for our community. Now we'll move on to 4E, a proclamation of the city council, City of Bastrop, Texas Recognizing June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Day. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed into law by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And, whereas Texans did not receive word of the emancipation until June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after it was signed into law, when Major General Gordon Granger sailed into Galveston Island announcing that the Civil War had ended, reading the proclamation and issuing a general order declaring that in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas, 2024 marks the 161st anniversary of the law. And whereas, in 1979, Texas State Representative Al Edwards sponsored HB 1016 in the legislature, which was signed by Texas Governor Bill Clements, making Juneteenth an official state holiday in Texas. And, whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, also known as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, or an annual holiday originating in Texas but celebrated in over 35 states, the District of Columbia, and internationally. And, whereas, on Saturday, June 15th, 2024, the Bastrop Juneteenth Committee will recognize the 37th anniversary of an organization celebrating this event. The 2024 Bastrop Juneteenth Committee continues the tradition established by several other Juneteenth Committees through the years to organize the celebration. The committee will celebrate and honor African-American citizens who have contributed to the Bastrop community with the parade and festival to commemorate the rich heritage of African-Americans in our history. The Juneteenth Committee, in partnership with the city of Bastrop and numerous sponsors, organizations, and citizens of our community, join to make this year's event and future events an annual success. Now therefore, I, Sylvia Carriero Trevino, City Manager of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Day.
Well, except for no barbecue, but that's a whole nother. We'll leave that alone. We will move on to citizen comments. I have some people signed up, no specific item, and I have an additional one here. First one to be called is Lindy Larson. If you will step up and state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Lindy Larson, 1320 Farm Street. Good evening, council. I had a little time on my hands tonight, and I wanted to drop in and say thank you to our city manager, Sylvia.
Oh, thank you.
I, along with many Bastrop citizens, support her and the outstanding job she's doing leading our Planning and Zoning Department, BEDC, in our city. I still don't know how she does it, with one arm tied behind her back, with grace and a smile, but she does. I want to thank our city manager for cutting down on contract workers and making our city so much more efficient by cutting waste. Her hard work in expediting the wastewater plant and getting it up and operational by managing the engineering department is exceptional and beyond measure. Last but not least, thank you Sylvia, for your hard work, dedication, unwavering commitment to our city. Thank you for your transparency, your open heart, your sit with cells, and leading our city in the direction that we need, we want, and we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aw, thank you.
Next is Zachary Ginsburg. He wishes to speak in opposition to an item, but I'm unsure what that item is. Move on to... Move on to John Everly. Name and address, you'll be given three minutes, sir.
My name is John Everly, twenty Lost Pines Avenue. I know all of you now. The first one I want to talk about this evening is Mayfest Park, where you're having a problem with people speeding through there as a shortcut. Not there for the park, they're just there trying to cut down some of their travel time. And ask that maybe we could look at putting some speed bumps in there. We're starting to get more activity up there as far as groups and activities, and we don't need people driving through there higher than the posted speed limit of twenty miles an hour. Thank you for your consideration on that.
Thank you, sir. Next is Dax Haverlack. Name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Dax Haverlack, seven seven nine Peach Creek Road in Rosanke, Texas. It's been a pretty quick two weeks and ten flights for me because I've been traveling a little too much. But yeah, thank y'all as a city, as city staff, and the entire chain for a successful Pride Weekend and everything leading up to that with our conversations, both from Bastrop Pride to y'all and y'all back to us to answer questions, get clarifications, raise concerns, and all that. It's a very fun, year-long process of learning and lessons and continually figuring out things that we didn't know existed. Thank you all for last Saturday's Family Expo, or at least the use of the convention center. That is a beautiful ACed environment. That was great for all the families, all the participating vendors, for everyone just to get out but stay cool. And finally, it's taken a couple months, but all the greenscapes at Chestnut Seventy-one and Chestnut ninety-five are kind of filling in and starting to look like the proper greenscapes that they were designed to do. And that's always a beautiful experience to get out of seventy-one and look at the greenscapes forming in. And it's also very nice when someone crashes into them every now and then. It gets repaired within a very quick time and rebuilt. So I want to thank y'all for a lot of effort, for a lot of big events that have been happening, and then the continuation of all of our summer events that are gonna, that, well, couldn't happen without the city and all of the amenities that we have. So I want to thank y'all again for staff, I guess especially Terry Moore, if we want to mention her, because she carries too many hats, takes care of it, and through the entire process was always available, good or bad. Maybe sometimes Sunday calls shouldn't be available. But thank y'all, the city, thank y'all for staff, thank y'all for going through every single step and process to give us our amenities, give us our nice, beautiful Bastrop. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Next scheduled to speak is John Everly. You're getting your steps in today, sir.
I'm sorry?
You're getting your steps in today.
Yeah, I am. Thank you. As you all know, I'm John Everly, live on Lost Pines. What I wanted to discuss a little bit this evening is the trail, proposed trail, up to Mayfest Park. Again, this is something that we really need to look at and consider the location of it. I realize that the city has a right-of-way at the back of our properties, but there's also a lot of heritage pines. Measured some of them, some of them are more than thirty inches in diameter. Also, the thought of putting it in an area that's so heavily forested and dense, how are we gonna know what's going on on that trail? I mean, to me, it would be more sensible to put it out, skirting twenty-one going up, because that way, at least when police go by, they can look over and see if there's anything going on. Who's gonna monitor that trail? If it's in the forest, how are we gonna know what's going on other than the citizens that live there seeing things? We fear that it's gonna just bring a lot of problems if it's cutting up through there. That ravine is just tremendous, it's back there. And I think we'll lose a lot of our heritage pines in trying to put that in. And then having to do maintenance on it, sanitation on it, all the other things. If it was out at the highway, it'd be much easier to access all the way around, especially if there's an emergency situation on the trail and somebody needs to be medevac. And that's all I have on that, the trail.
Thank you, sir.
Just need to think about a little more.
Thank you. Move on. Next scheduled speaker is Megan Webb. Name, address, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Megan Webb, and I reside at one oh nine Tyra Lane, which is in the ETJ. But as council may be aware, I also run a nonprofit organization that operates within the city limits of Bastrop. To know me is to know that I'm a fan of winging it, so the fact that I wrote anything down is probably significant. Tonight, I'm here in my capacity as a citizen. The concern I've come to raise this evening is one about which I felt I could no longer remain silent. I've resided in Bastrop for fifteen years now, and upon my arrival here from a much larger city, one of the first things that I noticed was that there was a real lack of an unhoused population here, which was a surprise to me, or at least from what I observed. Obviously, the area's grown. We navigated a pandemic and national political and economic instability, and that population has appeared to grow. And I think there's an impression that this group of people are making their way here from a neighboring city in order to take advantage of the new sources of support here. And I think that certainly might be true, but I've also become aware that many of these citizens are longtime Bastrop residents. As I've officially adopted in my mind, Bastrop as my hometown, I feel that I can say this, these people are our people, and they're part of our community. I've witnessed firsthand that we are the kind of people who take care of one another and certainly the most vulnerable among us. I feel that the responses to this issue have been reactive and pieced together, and I think this is an issue that deserves the best that we have to offer: coordination, intentionality, and thoughtfulness. I don't believe personally that it's a governing body's role to provide for all the needs of all the people. More than most, I'm especially aware of the kind of effort that it takes to serve vulnerable populations, and I understand that this council cannot carry the load on its own, nor can city staff be expected to. So what I'm asking for tonight is that you would take some steps towards creating a vehicle for public, private, and nonprofit entities to pool their expertise and resources to more effectively serve this segment of our population. We all have a vested interest in ensuring positive outcomes for these citizens. Lifting one another lifts us all, and it is my sincere prayer that you will share my heart in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Kevin Libby Morby. Although years late, we decided you needed to have an opportunity.
Hi, Kevin Libby Morby, two oh six Jennifer Lane. I think Megan said it best. I think we need to come together with a positive view at solving this problem. And I think we need to humanize these folks. Stop referring to them as the homeless. They're people, they're citizens, they're poor people. They don't have any resources. I think, I think the best approach is instead of taking resources away from them is because we're uncomfortable with looking at these people, I think we need to come together and help these people. And I would like to think, I'm leaving town soon, but I would like to think I've been living in a city where we take care of the most vulnerable members of our community. We can't just walk past these people. I think we should learn their names, learn their individual situations, and do our very best to help them instead of just try to drive them away. And I spoke to John Kirkland about this recently, and he asked me to come up with a solution. And I think the solution is here. I think the solution is in with all of our, in all of our hearts. I think if we look within ourselves and decide that we want to do this, we can do it. And I trust you guys to do it. You can, and there's other resources available. I think there's, Bluebonnet should be counted on to do their job. I had a situation where I reached out to Bluebonnet to help a certain individual, and I was told that he was gonna get help, and he deserved help, and it just fell through. And these people can advocate for themselves. They don't have a voice, and I think if you guys really try, I think you can give them a voice and help them, and all feel better about it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate what you brought to downtown also. Last I have on the list is John Everly.
Mayor, according to, according to our rules, people aren't allowed to sign up more than once for citizen comment. I just received that note.
Okay. Think we'll have to make do this time, but in the future, we only do it one time.
Sounds good, I'll just be here every time, I guess. This one's real short. I want to thank the city, all the work we're doing on the streets and everything's really nice, but you know, some of the little side streets like Lost Pines Avenue are getting forgotten. When I call and ask for something to be done up there, they want specific address, and they'll come up and they'll throw a little bit of asphalt in one chug hole, or they'll cut one branch, and that's it. So what I'm asking is that maybe we get a little consideration for our street, too. We pay taxes just like everybody else. And it's kind of frustrating, I haven't called in a while because I just get frustrated. I've just been going along with my loppers and cutting them myself or, you know, going around the chug holes. But our street needs some attention. It's down in places to literally one lane because of all the encroachment of the trees from city right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will make that correction in our next meeting on the process procedure, not on the streets. We'll move, we'll move on to item eight, consent agenda. Is anybody at the dice that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is anybody in the audience that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item eight A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the May twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Item eight B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero two four dash one seven of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter twelve titled Traffic and Vehicles, Article twelve point oh five titled Speed Limits, adding Section twelve point zero five point zero zero nine titled S H three oh four Speed Limits, zoning for traffic and rate of speed therein on S H three oh four in the city limits of the city of Bastrop, defining speeding and fixing a penalty therefore, declaring what may be a sufficient complaint in prosecutions hereunder, repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict herewith and providing for findings of fact, enactment, codification, effective date, repealer, severability, proper notice and meeting as shown in Exhibit A. Item eight C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero two four dash one four of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter three, building regulations Article three point one seven, flood damage prevention as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item eight D, consider action to approve Resolution number R dash two zero two four dash six five of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving amendments to the Real Estate Purchase Contract and Performance Agreement between the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and Accutronic Real Estate, Inc., authorizing all necessary actions, including execution of necessary documentation, repealing all resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Council, City Secretary is laying out the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
Second, from Councilmember Fossler. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to items for individual consideration. Nine A, consider action to approve Resolution number R dash two zero two four dash six nine at city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the contract for the update of the twenty sixteen Comprehensive Plan to Half Associates, Inc., to increase the contract price by an amount not to exceed forty thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Hereby attached to Exhibit A, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing effective date. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Half and Associates was previously awarded the Comprehensive Plan in Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six. As we've all learned from the gateway, the importance of the Comprehensive Plan, and typically, the Comprehensive Plan is done well before Development Code is adopted. We got in front of our skis in Bastrop. We had some amendments to the B three code that were going on, as well as many of the master plans that still remain in draft form awaiting, guess what, the Comprehensive Plan to be adopted. So we've engaged Half and Associates again. There has been a price change in the amount of forty thousand two eighty. Council previously funded one eighteen two forty from one-time general fund expenses. This amount will span two budget years. So I anticipate the forty two eighty being budgeted in FY twenty-five as we already have the one eighteen encumbered. And Half and Associates is here with any questions.
Councilmember Lee, you have a question or comment?
Yes, I have several. Thank you, Mayor. So I wasn't, I went back to review this discussion previously, and it happened on April twenty-fifth, and I was not at that meeting. I was out of town. But I, one thing I noticed was that it was on the consent agenda for that date. And I probably spent the better five hours trying to see if it was actually on the agenda for council discussion. Is there a reason why it was just on consent agenda?
No clue. It was probably a non-consentious item that had been discussed prior.
So for these money amounts, do we typically put money amounts of that nature that we, that need approval on a consent agenda without council discussion?
Sometimes, yes. You've had a lot of things on consent agenda that way. The discussion with Half and Associates began before Sylvia, and it carried over into the first part of twenty twenty-three, and this was signed in April of twenty twenty-three.
So I don't know if you know if it's, if there were any discussions before twenty twenty-three then? Because I only went back to January. I just felt like we wouldn't have, I don't know why we would approve a money amount of this type of agreement without council discussion.
Well, the consent, the Comprehensive Plan one is required by charter and is required by state law. So it's probably a very easy thing to know that we needed to update our Comprehensive Plan. And as part of the B three code, the discussion was also, you need to update your Comprehensive Plan. So it was part and parcel of that whole process.
Okay. So now I'm trying to understand what the forty thousand dollars is for, because I compared the two agreements. Is it, is it because we delayed?
Yes.
So we're having to pay forty thousand dollars because we didn't execute an act on?
Yes. There's been an increase in their, in their rates since that time, and there's an increase in public outreach and public involvement in this scope.
But on page five of the original Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six, it says delays. Contractor shall have no damages or delay for delay or hindrance. In the event of delay or hindrance not the fault of the contractor, an extension of time shall be the contractor's sole remedy. So what is the forty thousand dollars for?
So again, it's, they started the process. There was some initial public comments and public contact. I want greater public content and public comment. And so some of the changes that you'll see is in their scope. They've moved dollar amounts, and then obviously, their rates have changed a little bit in who's going to be providing their service, and so there's a difference of forty thousand.
But that's actually not true, because I went back and I looked again at the actual original contract. It talked about how many meetings they were gonna have with the city, with the residents. It talked about how many, it talked about planning and zoning being a steering committee. It talked about who was on the project. There was a lot of community engagement. It was very comprehensive. I think I even put it down. Project in kickoff, request for information and data, public engagement, project management. All of that was in there.
So they did start some of their process with staff. They started some of their conversation with staff when Jennifer was still here. So they burned through a portion of their budget. It's now time to complete the rest of the task.
So if they started with staff, they, so they, you're saying they did have some meetings initially? So wouldn't that take away, because we've already, or I'm assuming they've already invoiced us for that? So why, again, the forty thousand?
One, that staff is no longer here. That's the first thing. Two, there has been a change in where we're going to head. change in where we're going to head versus where we were headed. That's specific to the B three and how that aligns with the comprehensive plan, specifically as it relates to uses and densities and impervious cover. So it is actually almost a starting over. It's a reset.
So to that point, the project leads, we didn't get a revised contract. So on the, on the older contract, it says that the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six still had Trey Jobe as the project manager, Kieran Ba as the deputy project administrator, P and Z served as the steering committee. All of that was on that original, but we didn't get a revised copy of that contract to say who will be the project lead on it.
It's not in your new contract. Half, would you care to comment?
Well, I'm actually asking on the city's part, because on the city's-
So obviously, Councilmember Lee, those two people don't work here anymore.
Right.
So that's got to be changed, and we can do that through the contract process. And that, we have a planner, we have a senior planner and a planner in development services now, and so they will be the two points of contact, as well as myself, Andres, and Viviana. So we will get that corrected before the contract is inked.
Will we see the contract before it's inked? Because I just feel like-
Unless there's substantive changes, I'm not sure why you would need to see it again, but I'm happy to bring it for another reading.
I think that we should, only because I was, what we received was the same contract from before. And if there's going to be, you're saying you want to add more engagement, I'd like to see all of that information in a revised contract, not with a contract that has Trey Jobe's name on it and Kieran's name on it.
We had, Half, didn't you include additional? Yeah, you can come address, please.
Ilte Capricioso with Half and Associates. So you should have a copy of the scope of services that is revised based on some of the questions that I think you had with engagement, as well as with some of the work that we had already accomplished. And then, in addition to that, I think there were some new plans that you all have just approved that we need to review that weren't included in that previous. So you should have that. If not, we're happy to send it over to Sylvia.
The scope that we received was far less dense than what we originally got-
Okay.
-in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
So in saying the forty thousand is going to, is for more service, based on the summary of what we got in our packet for this week, it's less services.
It's not entirely for new services. There is an increase in fees and our rates, and so we did provide that information to Sylvia as well. So, and hopefully I'll have that, but we're happy to resend it, to send it to you guys.
And the increase in fees is because of the delay?
No, the increase in fees is just because of the, we go through annual increases with our staff, and so those are just more reflective of what the cost is to accomplish the project.
Plus, it's actually a reset, because those staff members aren't here anymore, and we're talking about the code and the comprehensive plan in a much different light.
Has there been any deliverables since April of last year?
No, I don't believe so. Nope.
And the scope of services, the scope of work has not changed? It's still-
It's primarily the same in terms of the sections of the plan that we're updating, with a focus, kind of a refocus on working with your staff and working with the plans that you all have recently completed.
So the GAN Charter timeline, is that going to be changed, or is the one that's in the current document now going to the timeline that-
I think we still have about a nine-month period in there. So I don't think the timeline has changed in terms of the nine-month timeframe.
As council, and as also the citizens, I'm sure they would like to have, you know, expectations of what they can look at over the next nine months, to your point. And I would like to see a list of deliverables at some point in time, and when we might could see some of those deliverables.
Sure. For the next meeting, we'll provide the comparative contract, and then also a deliverable. There is a GAN Charter. It is still nine months.
Yes.
And going back to that delay, so even, I mean, this specifically says, extension of time shall be the contractor's sole remedy. How does that, is that saying that there's no time, or no pay, but no time?
So we stopped them. They didn't stop on their own accord. We stopped them. As we were going through, as the council reviewed the draft drainage plan that came forward, as the council went through the draft transportation and impact fees, as the county adopted, we put a stop to Half. It was not Half's-
I understand that, and it specifically says that. In the event of delay or hindrance, not the fault of the contractor, an extension of time shall be the contractor's sole remedy. Am I missing something, Alan?
I think you're reading it accurately.
So there's, based on this, there shouldn't be an increase. This is saying extension of time, sole remedy.
And I think in a controversy, that would be the case. I think in the situation our city manager is describing, both parties are agreeing to do something different, and that's what led to what's before you today, which I think both parties can agree to modify it going forward. There's been a change in circumstances on either end.
So, thank you, Alan. So I would not feel comfortable voting for the forty thousand without more of a scope, better scope of work, or that's current to what they're going to be doing this time around.
If I could add one more clarifying comment, because I think I hear what you're saying, councilperson. The increase in fee doesn't account for any of our time in discussions back and forth with the city manager or anyone else, or us kind of thinking through when there was the delay on the scope. We are not accounting for any time during that delay. It doesn't cover any of those time and materials. It's to redo those initial stakeholder meetings that were already done, because those staff are no longer here, and because the request was to start the process over from the beginning. So you do have some fee that will be for new work done. It will, that forty thousand does not include any of those delayed encumbered costs that we did just cover as, you know, time. It is what it is. And then the additional fee is for a little bit more of that stakeholder engagement, as well as that technical review that Ilte described. And then we also wanted to look at some of the hazards that you all are facing, and looking at the overall resilience of the community within the comprehensive plan, and just looking to support. We know that wildfire and other issues are a part, and so it's a little bit more of an added component to the scope. It doesn't mean a new, it will be a new section as well, but it's more of a technical review for you all. So we can definitely outline where that forty thousand came from, but I wanted to clarify it wasn't for any, what would be considered in that delay and that encumbered time that happened over the delayed process.
Yes, I would love to have that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Councilmember Lee? Any other questions, comments, concerns for either Half and Associates or City Manager? Seeing, no, Councilmember Plunkett?
I would ask the city manager if there is anything urgent. Is there a reason that we need to do this, that we need to do this this evening, or should we put it off, or?
Well, urgent in that we're trying to start all of the development code reviews as well, and you can't do one without the other.
No, I agree.
I think it can be approved with the amendments that Councilmember Lee is requesting at your next meeting. And it, you know, it gets on a second reading at that point.
Okay. There's no other questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion. I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion?
Yes. So we're going to come back with a second reading at the next council meeting, correct?
Correct.
Approving with a comeback of the information requested in a second.
Yes, and I'll make sure it's not on consent. I'll make sure it's under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity, ma'am. Seeing no further comment or question indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
And just for clarification, Sylvia, this resolution is going to be listed as first reading, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you for the discussion. Nine B, consider action to approve the first reading ordinance number two zero two four dash one eight, approving the creation of the Charter Review Commission, appointing initial commissioners, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing for an effective date, move to include on the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four consent agenda for a second reading. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. These are with the spell check correction of Alex Henley, not Alexa, which I think, or Alex is, which is what was spelled. These are the twelve names that were presented at the prior council meeting for consideration.
Counsel, you know that each of us submitted a slate with two names. We kind of went outside of what the normal charter would be, but I think it's a very important process that we undertake and truly look at our charter. It's time to do so. I will pose one issue there. Normally, a board commission or committee is made up of odd numbers so that you don't have the problem of having ties. And I would submit to y'all a request that we add a thirteenth member to this board, to this commission, to forestall the fact that we may have a sixth to sixth tie. I will submit to y'all that I am recommending, should y'all decide to go to a thirteenth member, Richard Martin's name as that thirteenth member, and I would appreciate y'all's consideration of that request. Councilmember Plunkett, do you have your light on? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I do think that a thirteenth member is, or an odd number of members is necessary. Otherwise, you would be having to exclude the chair from being able to participate in the voting process and limit his or her conversation in the discussion. I'm okay with adding a thirteenth member. I don't know Richard Martin, but I trust your judgment, but that would be my thought.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Fossler?
I also support the idea of having an odd number.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know Richard Martin. I'm sure he's a very nice man, but I have, always when we confirm anything, I always do my due diligence to find out who the people are. So if you could just give me a little, tell me who Richard Martin is, I would appreciate it, because I know all the people on here. So just give me something about Richard, please.
Richard is a real estate agent here in town. He's a longtime resident of Bastrop. He's been here thirty years, I believe, and I think his office is over right off of Chestnut and Jefferson. He's actively involved in events here in the city of Bastrop, as well as in the county. He is an active member in several different organizations throughout town, and when I reached out to him, he was somewhat hesitant to join another committee, but he was so committed to doing something with the city, especially in the relative to charter amendments, that he is resigning from a couple of the committees that he's on, not city committees, but other committees such as that. But he's very active in the community.
Mayor, this is Richard Martin, who is super, super engaged in like keeping the health of the river, correct?
That's absolutely him.
That's my, okay, that's the Richard I know. I didn't know his last name, but he is, oh, he's given me so much information on the river.
Yep.
He's, yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
And he's got a great dog.
[laughing]
A great dog.
A dog?
Yeah. All righty. Do you have anything else, Councilmember Meyer?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is that your motion to include the thirteenth member?
Motion to approve, including a thirteenth member, Richard Martin.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion for Councilmember Lee, a second by Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on in this, and we might as well let our charter commission know your work has begun, folks. Nine C, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two four dash six six of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Chrissy Fountain to place seven of the Bastrop Parks and Recreation Board as required in section three point zero eight of the city's charter, and establishing an effective date. I know this is submitted by-
I was going to say, it's yours.
City manager, but it was, it was my item, and the sign-off on this was, I believe, Councilmember Lee, if I'm not mistaken. The, she is a dis golf champion and advocate, and I would appreciate y'all's consideration of her to take now Councilmember Fossler's place on our Parks and Recreation Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fossler, a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Welcome aboard. She has sent me numerous emails. Anything else I need to do? Anything else I need to do? Do you need anything? No, no. Be quiet. We'll move on to item ninety. Before I do, this is slated for action by confirmation under our charter and by ordinance, confirmation for liaisons. It's not required. I do want to let y'all know that I'm appointing Councilmember Lee to be the liaison of Parks and Recreation, taking the place of former Councilmember Crouch, and that Councilmember Fossler, I'm appointing her to the DEI Board as liaison, taking my place, as I had to remove myself as a liaison to that. So any question that y'all might have relative to those two boards, make sure you pose those to the new liaisons, and I'm sure they'll be happy to provide you those answers. We will move on to item nine E. Consider action to confirm the appointing of the mayor, the council member Carrie Fossler, to the ad hoc executive committee to address considerations related to the regional sports facility located in the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Industrial Park, replacing former council member Jimmy Krauts. Councilmember Meyer alerted me to this, as y'all know. We were very careful, but I have a quorum of either the EDC or the city council on this working ad hoc committee. Thank you, Councilmember Meyer, for bringing it to my attention. Councilmember Kirkland and Councilmember Lee cannot serve on it, because they sit on the EDC. I cannot serve on it because of actions taken on April twenty-ninth, and the only one left to be able to serve on that, because Councilmember Plunkett and Councilmember Meyer already own that, is Councilmember Fossler. So it is a-
Don't you feel so wanted with that phrase?
It is. I'm respectfully asking for y'all's confirmation of Councilmember Fossler to this ad hoc committee.
Motion to approve.
Or second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you, council, and thank y'all for all y'all do when y'all step up to serve on these extra committees and boards. I really appreciate it. Of course, you were drafted, Councilmember Fossler, so. Nine F, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two four dash six eight of the city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the acquisition of certain real property known as sixteen Luther King Drive, being two point one nine five acres of land out of building block five six east of Main Street in the city of Bastrop, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement, all necessary documents for the acquisition of said property for the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, provided for severability, provided for repeal, and provided an effective date. Mr. Rosales?
Mayor, council, we're looking to acquire the property. We discussed this during the April twenty-third executive. We negotiated and brought back this agreement, and so we are ready to purchase. Any questions? This is for Flood Plain, Flood Way, as shown on the screen there. Property, full property is in the Flood Way, Flood Plain. We're looking to purchase it for additional future improvements to Gil's Branch later down the road. Any questions?
Councilmember Meyer? Councilmember Lee, you have questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I was not at that meeting, and I just was wondering what type of improvements, like a detention pond? Will there be piping?
Subject to when we get ready. So in the Half and Associates Gil's Branch, we identified certain properties. This was one of the properties. identified certain properties. This was one of the properties. Um, and so now that we have the property, we have to do some surveying and then we'll bring back what that project may be in the future as well as what grant funding. Uh, we still have some grant funding that's, uh, out that hasn't been denied yet. And so based on that grant funding will be what we, uh, determine will be done with this property at a later time. It could be retention, it could be detention, and it could, could be just expanding the, the Gil's Branch, um, uh, waterway there.
And did the, did the property owners have to be notified for this type of purchase? And are, are they gonna be, will they have to be notified at all once it's decided what type of-
You're talking about like the neighboring properties?
Yes.
Um-
Because that's kind of in the middle of-
No, but we, we can, we can do that. We can notify them, um, and just let them know. I mean, we're gonna want to notify them. We already have easements and things already established, but, uh, we can definitely notify them and let them know what we're gonna be doing when we get to that point.
You said that, that's, that's gonna all come after a survey?
Yeah, we'll have to do some survey work and some additional work before we get to-
Significant capital work. Councilmember Lee, what you missed is that this property has changed hands a couple of times and there's been a number of proposed developments that want to come through here. And those proposed developments would need some changes to the flood maps. And, uh, there will come a time where a developer does a, uh, letter of map amendment or revision, which will not service, because this is in the Gil's Branch, it's in the flood area. So when it, uh, was proposed to us, the price that they wanted didn't match the appraisal. So council authorized us to negotiate appraisal value. And now that the Atlas fourteen maps are out, it's in an even worse area. So it's in our best interest to acquire it and not exacerbate flooding and not allow any development on it.
With development, yeah.
Correct.
Makes sense. I was just wondering how the property, what consideration was given for the property owners?
Surrounding.
Yeah.
Uh, none yet, but when we get ready to do something, we will definitely take that in consideration.
It's very preliminary right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we're, first step is acquire and then the next ones will be design and then after that.
Our best laid plans prior to Atlas fourteen are kind of out the window in Atlas fourteen.
Correct. And, and the city manager said if we, even just by, by acquiring this property and leaving it as it is, that's better than, than doing, um,
Right.
or allowing future development.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosler?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fosler, a second by Councilmember Lee. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Nine G, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two four dash seven zero of the City Council, City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of Bastrop, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Ms. McElwain?
Good evening. Um, this is a resolution to, um, to approve the intent to issue certificates of obligation. The resolution that I brought before you in the last council meeting had all of those projects, the excess ranch, Valverde, Pearl River. This is going to be funding those projects. Um, the intent is not to exceed thirty-eight million dollars. This is a, um, issuance that has been planned since twenty twenty-two and we're just trying to finish these projects.
Move to approve. I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move to item ten, executive session. City Council shall convene a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero two to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential acquisitions of real estate related to the Westside Collection System wastewater improvements project in the following cases pending in Bastrop County Court at Law Number One, case number two zero dash two zero four six two, City of Bastrop, Texas versus Baum Interests Limited Partnership, and case number two zero dash two zero four six four, City of Bastrop, Texas versus Palms Properties LLC. Ten B, City Councils shall convene a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one to seek the advice of legal counsel and possible action regarding a potential request for a petition to create Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Three. Ten C, City Council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero eight seven to seek the advice of legal counsel and possible action regarding a three-eighty agreement economic development incentives for the Cinderell Pearl River PRC zero one Bastrop LLC development. Ten D, City Council shall convene a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero eight seven to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the real estate and economic development aspects of potential development of a qualified hotel project. It is seven forty-six. Counsel is in executive session. It is nine forty-six. Counsel is back in open session. On items ten B, ten A, and ten D, there will be no action. On ten C, I believe we have a motion.
I move to approve the three-eighty agreement and authorize the city manager to execute it subject to two edits by the city attorney. Number one, limitation on hot fund expenditures. And number two, limitation on duration to maximum six years or maximum reimbursement amount, whichever is earlier.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Meyer, a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We will move to item twelve, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We stand adjourned.